While everyone's waiting, um, uh, Colin, what was that? Place where you look for lidar maps that are high quality?
Oh, um. The national map?
The national map. Thank you.
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the layers, uh, or they've got a bunch of like wider based layers, but, uh, yeah. It's some distinction, Mr. Lloyd.
Uh, Jessica, if you want to get started, I think we're good to go and we'll just hope that Sue be able to connect.
Okay, well, let's get started. Thanks for carrying on with help me last time and Duncan for stepping in when I wasn't feeling good. It was great. I don't like the last minute changes, so, yeah. Um, okay, so. Are there, well, I guess so the emergency, um, exits are at the back of the room on both sides and you could go either direction down the hall to get outside. Um, are there any agenda changes? Guess I'd like to say it's nice to see everyone all together. And, um, you know, I know Paul had sent the, uh, um. You know, the update and it's in the, the packet, but I just wanted to say it was a really big, um, kudos to the whole group. The, the city council adopted the land development regulations. There was a lot of work. Um, and you know, for them to pass unanimously is a, a big deal. So they, they clearly are kind of. Trusting us and listening to us and taking our work seriously. And that's not the case in all communities. So I'm really just happy that we can. Kind of have that relationship and. Um, and I know we'll be addressing part of that later in the agenda as well, the few items.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, and thank you, Tim. And for being here. I think that's really helpful that you're kind of experiencing these conversations we're having and. Yeah, thank you. And thank you to staff, which we would not feel to do a fraction of the work without you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, well, I guess I skipped ahead to a little bit of an announcement, um, but do we have any, um? Public items that are not related to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, seems like we are not seeing any in the audience or online, so does anyone have any announcements? Um, Paul?
An announcement, uh, not a announcement. Yeah. Couple of questions, uh, for Paul. Um, just in terms of a Shelburne Road update, what's happening with Denny's and with Palace nine?
Uh, let, pardon me, uh, with the. Denny's, oh, Denny's, uh, so there, um, a entity has come in and received an approval to split that into two. Retail type spaces at the Denny's, so they are doing the fit up work now.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Um, so there's work going on and the space will be filled in the not too distant future. So that's great.
Yeah.
Um, have not heard, um, any recent update on Palace nine other than the, um. The property owner is, uh, the, is Joe Larkin, um, of Larkin Realty that have built the work around it. The building lease, uh, has been with Merrill Jarvis, um, who, uh, has the other movie theaters or theater in the area. Um, I don't know the details other than I know that they've been in regular communication for a while on the subject.
The Palace nine building?
The Palace nine, yes.
Is that's, uh, elevated eight or two, isn't it? The hockey training.
Is that what's hap?
Yeah.
It's what? It's turned into a hockey?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Sorry, I forgot that they're doing it. They're doing indoor hockey there. Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, that's that they're.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, they're gonna get Duncan's refit in that building. Yeah.
What kind of hockey?
Hockey.
What kind?
Ice hockey?
Ice hockey.
Hockey?
It's gonna be a rink in there.
Then it, they're gonna have a smaller rink. It's gonna be like the size of the patch ice at Letty. Hmm. Yeah, so they're gonna have jets and the whole night.
Thank you, Duncan. I completely forgot about that. Yes.
So they took the seats out and put an ice rink in.
They're in the process. Your retrofit, but cool. Yeah. I'm impressed.
Down to one movie theater, right? Or do we have nine?
Uh.
Oh, Essex and.
Roxy and. Roxy, Roxy's going. Roxy, no Roxy anymore either.
So it's majestic ten and Essex then.
Yeah.
Wow. Well.
And then also probably just, uh, uh, the, um, the, um. Our graffiti friends.
Or the porn property.
The, uh, work is ongoing. So the latest, I don't know, remember the last time I updated you, but. Uh, the property owner has two parallel tracks that they've been following. Um, they initially got, uh. They submitted an application to the DRB. I think I mentioned some of this before. They did not meet our inclusionary requirements or, um, requirements related to an ATM. That project was denied. That was appealed to the environmental court. At the same time, they submitted a fresh application to the city's DRB that resolved those two issues. They got an approval from the DRB. They then got a month after the approval from the DRB, the environmental court came to the same conclusion as our DRB had come to and denied the project. Um, they are following two parallel tracks where they've been. Moving forward on the paperwork associated with the approval and they appealed the other decision to the Supreme Court. So no action, no physical activity happening yet, but lots of stuff happening. And the ball is in their court on which path they want to be pursuing, but it, at this time, it seems both.
Really related to Jeff Nick? A little path that seems to be popular as well. I do not have a question too. I don't know if this, but I'm just curious, um. Do you typically or can you update the planning commission and potentially the city council? When, um, projects are kind of underway, people are always asking, oh, what's going in there? And we never know. And I, I mean, I, you can't spill the beans if they haven't.
Right, we can only share, right, we can only share what's, you know, what they formally submitted, um. Or, and then, you know, ideally when they've got approvals, because sometimes people submit and then don't do a thing and that gets people. You know, excited and they're not following through, but, um. Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good community interest subject.
To have people have us know what's kind of on the blocks as we think about. You know, making changes and, and the impact, if you don't know what the impact potentially can be.
Okay. Let me think about that with our, with our team to figure out how we could most efficiently do that and keep.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Cause people ask me and I'm like.
So then preemptively, there's, uh, you see there's a lot of work happening in front of the Doubletree former Sheridan. That's a four story new addition, um, that will be connected by a skybridge to the now Doubletree former Sheridan along Williston Road.
Oh.
So there's a big giant pit there right now, but that's gonna be, it's in the form base code, so it's right up against the street. Um, it's gonna have a, uh, plaza area just west of it towards Burlington. Um, that will sort of create, uh, we think a really nice streetscape there and help to, um, have it not just be a big. Giant parking lot in front of the building, which is what it has been. They're gonna be tearing down, uh, a portion of the hotel that was. Very undersized the rooms, um, and that they hadn't really been using very much of, um, as one of the original parts of the building, so. Yeah.
That's the old Sheridan.
The old Sheridan, yeah.
Keep changing their names and I forget which is which. Oh, that's interesting.
Thank you. Skybridge?
Yeah, so on the, uh, at the second or third story, they're gonna connect. The new building to the old building because they still have to do circulation of emergency vehicles and parking underneath. Um, and they wanted to have connected building for visitors who, um, come during our winter presumably. And, and to have one security, you know, one check in desk therefore, yeah.
Got it.
Uh, my questions too came from other people too.
Okay, that's good feedback.
People asking too, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's good feedback and we'll come up with a game plan and get it out there, including, um. You know, uh, the first thing that comes to mind is to, uh, think about how do we include that in city news too, because that gets out to so many people in the community and. Yeah, okay.
Any other announcements or items? Any other staff items?
Um, just one, um, which is, I just wanted to be checking in with everybody. Your next meeting is two weeks from tonight, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I just wanted to see if we had a quorum for that meeting, if anybody won't be in town for that week.
So it's November twenty sixth.
Right, it's the Tuesday prior to the Thursday Thanksgiving.
Uh, I will not be able to, I will not be able to attend.
Okay.
I will attend. I will be here.
Not be here.
So no Michael.
I'll be here.
And. Okay, so we still have a call and.
So no Paul and no Michael, but everybody else as far as you know? All right.
And I won't be at the first December meeting.
Yeah, and then.
You will not be?
I will, I will, I'm sorry, I won't be in person. I will join in remotely.
Okay.
So and then December tenth, and, and then we.
Not be at that.
Okay, so we, okay, so we have one down for December tenth. Um, and then just to finish out that thought, we do not have one week of Christmas, just to like say it out loud. Okay. Great. I guess, you know, oh, I don't know if this is a thing to bring up under other business or here, but. The second page of our agenda always has these, um, virtual meeting public participation guidelines and. I think we do don't operate like this anymore. This was pretty specific to COVID when we were all on. Like, you know, this page, like it's got a bunch of texts and it's supposed to give in. Well, well, I know probably a lot of people don't, but, um, I was realizing that we're, we've kind of reverted back to like. Our previous interactions with the public of like calling people in the audience and. People generally keeping their videos off and it makes me wonder if we should. Um, it's, you know, just not tonight, obviously, but at some point in the next while. Um, you know, just revisit these guidelines because we're.
I think that'd be a good idea, especially because where, where we're at now and likely for this, for.
You're about item five, right?
The what?
Item five.
Um, it's not item five, it's the next page. It's like.
It's these.
How do you pay?
Yeah, the guidelines. So this is not part of our agenda. I'm just bringing it up kind of under.
Yeah, the backside of that page, yeah.
Is that?
See it on the.
It's on the screen right now.
All right.
Yeah. Um, it's not an exciting topic, but it feels important.
No, it feels a little out of date because now the policy is hybrid meetings. And so, um, this is, this is technically virtual meeting guidelines, so. Um, Jessica, do you want maybe, how do you fill up? Maybe if you and I coordinate on.
Yeah, I think.
On a chat to everybody and then you can all respond.
I just felt like maybe it was something to just bring up publicly before we. I, I guess I was also thinking about this because I was reading the minutes from last meeting about. Being more accessible to the public and I think making sure our instructions are. Up to date might help someone who's new to our meeting.
Maybe we could find a way for it not to be a six point font and a full page of.
Right, yeah.
Of long text too.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, I don't know if this is something that even should be like. Uh, looked at by those consultants who are thinking about accessibility, but this doesn't feel very accessible and it's. Kind of a little bit of misinformation right now, so. Okay, so Paul and I will tackle that. Okay, and now we can move on to item five. Which is our LDR twenty four oh one through twenty four ten adoption and council follow up.
Um, so as Jessica indicated, the council adopted the, um, regulations, um, unanimously and with, um, a great deal of thanks for you all. Um, they had a few, um, follow up items that, uh, came up, um, that I flagged in here, um. A couple of them were in the course of their discussion, um, letter. C, uh, came up in their, over the course of their discussion of things that they'd like you all to look at, um, a couple of those you already have in your work plan. Um, like the, um. Medium scale neighborhood is already something you just approved a project charge for. I don't think you had really spent any time talking about the. Hundred foot maximum distance, um, between on homes in the NRP and the minimum maximum block coverage subject, but, um. Uh, that's something that they asked that, um, it was not a formal motion, but, uh. Expressions of interest in your following up on that. And then there were two items in a formal motion, um. I included the latter from UVM, uh, it turns out somehow, somewhere along the line, as we were getting the. Maps updated, um, related to the habitat blocks that a little chunk of land off Spear Street. Um, just north of Swiss Street somehow wound up getting an NRP zoning, even though it's, you know, half an acre and it's. Uh, completely disconnected from any other, um, it was just a mapping error that occurred, but it went through all of the public hearings and so we didn't feel comfortable just removing it because. Anybody who's looking at public hearings would say, well, that was in the planning permission public hearing, it was in the council public hearing, so. Um, the council didn't want to delay the adoption of the regulations for something that's technical and UVM was comfortable with that, so they. Um, directed you in the next round of amendments to make that correction. And then there's the second one. Related to the definition of the educational support facility that the council wanted you to look into and come back with any changes that you want to come back with. Not, that's not a mandate to make a specific change, but it's a, um, request for you to explore a subject.
Um, as a matter.
In your work plan.
As a matter of interest, that, that little parcel and the one that is adjoint to are both contiguous with the Edland Forest, which is. AI, um.
Yes.
But it makes sense.
What happened was, what happened in this instance was if you recall. Our old zoning used to say that if your property was more than seventy percent covered by, um, a habitat block, you could build on thirty percent of it. Um, because of the change of the tick clicking that took place in Act forty seven and in order to align, uh, water and sewer areas. We did, you all determined the thirty percent to remove. This little spot is the thirty percent that was to be removed, but then it accidentally got an NRP tagged to it, which of course is counted.
I agree, it shouldn't have changed.
Yeah.
Um, but I had another question or not, wasn't my question, but Councilor Chalick had raised, uh, an issue at the. Um, city council meeting about the potential for extremely high. Density given our latest i- uh, iteration of. Um. Lot size, uh, I suppose, but in theory you could have something like over fifty units per acre. If you go by the four units per. Um, not fifty units per acre, if you divide an acre into eight, five thousand square foot lots and put. Um, eight, two, four plexes on it, you're gonna get pretty hot, you're gonna get well over fifty. Um, so he had a concern about that there's no, that would be, uh. Well, wouldn't be practical, it wouldn't be beautiful, it would be a mess, so he's. He didn't give us, uh, suggest what we might do about it, but, um, I don't know whether there's, uh, some way of. Of obviating that out, like a, a maximum. I know we had a cap before, but it was very low. And, uh, in the old, um, uh, conservation PUD, we had a cap of sticks. That's obviously not gonna fly, but something.
Is, it just is, so is that C three?
No, uh, that was a concern raised by Councilor Chalick, but no other counselors, um, expressed that, and so I, I didn't include every. Item that individual counselors spoke to, I, I only referenced ones where. Uh, at least, at least two and probably three in each case spoke to, so.
I see.
Um, acknowledged and I, I didn't feel it was representative to speak to each counselor's individual comments. Um, but absolutely that was shared by Counselor Chalick.
So the three listed here reflect at least two counselors or?
Uh, so what, I guess what I can say is A and B were passed as a motion five to zero by council. C represents the dialogue that took place and a lot of head nodding, so I, uh. My interpretation was that at least three counselors, um, were interested in seeing this subject area. Um, but there was no formal action, so if I'm off by one, when I say at least three, it might have been four, it might have been two in some cases, but it was a. A lot of head nodding on all those subjects.
Um, I guess so Paul and Michael, what Michael's describing sounds very similar to C three, like what? What do you see as the difference?
So the difference in C three is this was something also raised by Counselor Chalick, um, where the question was. As parcels get larger, so if you imagine, um, in the low scale neighborhood, um. If it's a, uh, say one acre parcel and somebody was choosing to build a single unit building on that. Um, that single unit building could in theory be, you know. Twenty thousand square foot building with, uh, eighteen parking spaces and then nine hour garage to go with it because. The lot coverage remains the same, so it's not about density of development, it's about intensity of a use of somebody sort of. Uh, if they weren't to divide it and put it into more housing, then it could be a monstrous scale of a. Of, of a single unit or two, two unit building. So while we're thinking of a fourplex being this, what if the fourplex was this? Um, that was that concern that, that others shared of, um, is there a way to. Sort of have it, have it scale as you go larger, but then if you were to subdivide it, which you're legally allowed to do, then you'd be allowed to do the. The small ones again, it's really about monstrously large individual buildings and, and the coverage with it.
Uh huh. Um, on CII, exploring the hundred foot maximum, is that the same? Um, discussion that we heard?
Yeah.
And so they want us to explore making it more than a hundred feet or less?
Uh, I'll, I'll. They would like you to explore it to be allowed to be more.
More.
But they did not give a directive as to what your conclusion should be.
Right, okay.
So you could conclude to say that you're happy with it as it is or it should be smaller, but they were. Asked you to explore the feedback that the individual had given, uh, wanting to see more separation.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
That referred also to the carve out, uh, there was a discussion, uh, with, with a landlord who wanted to build. Take advantage of the, of the two acre carve out, but. He ran afoul of. That, that whatever he built must be within a hundred feet or is it three hundred feet? No, a hundred feet of. The li, the house he's living in now.
Right, yeah.
So.
Okay. And we didn't do anything about it. We just heard him, yeah.
Well, we also heard it after we had our.
Right, right.
Felt like a very different subject related to anything.
No, no, I.
Yeah, no, I don't think we were trying to ignore the person. We were at a very strange point in the process at that point, so.
It's, by the way, I think that's a hundred foot minimum, not maximum.
It is a maximum. So in the NRP, you can build up to three homes if you have fifteen acres. The homes can be separated by no more than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Other.
It makes them closer together. That was his complaint.
Yep.
Okay, because we asked him, he had a solution that we talked to him about, but he didn't like the solution because he didn't want the houses to be so close together.
Yeah.
So that was, I think how we left it with.
I, I was a little confused, so the carve out wasn't applicable there? Is, isn't this like two homes in the same wall? I thought the carve out was sort of our solution to this.
Um.
He, yeah, that, but a hundred foot stool applies.
It, it does for carbon?
Well, so this is within the natural resource protection zoning district.
Okay.
And so the natural resource protection district doesn't have these things like the carve out in it.
Oh.
Um, because the primary goal of the natural resource protection district is natural resource protection.
Got you.
Any housing that's allowed is in the very constrained one hole, uh, one building if you have. Fewer than fifteen acres and three buildings total if you have more than fifteen acres of.
His space of cluster. Got you.
So.
Clearly we're interested.
In all the residential districts, this is really a conservation district.
Okay, thanks for.
That has allowance for.
Yeah, uh, I'm just spoke about the car out here. It's, it's the T S, he has twenty four acres, I think it is, so he gives.
Right. So, um, we'll add these ones into, uh, we'll weave them into your work plan, uh, the first two, which the council did ask to be in this next round. We'll make sure that we put up front because they. Um, asked to be included in this next round of amendments and the other ones we will weave in, um. Uh, we'll add it to your work plan and weave it in.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, anything else on that or are we moving on to city center? Okay, we'll move into item six, city center form based code. Um, next steps and update.
Thanks folks. So, um, I'll be talking about this, uh, for the most part, uh, and, um. So. Tonight, what we're gonna talk about is an update to the project that has been investigating, um, the form base code and its performance and where we're gonna go with that. And where I'm going to talk about some initial ideas for policy proposals that have come out of that.
Nick, can you put your speaker near your mouth?
Sure, yeah, and, um. And then, so yeah, we're gonna take a look at some of these initial, um, go over some of the research, take a look at some of the initial policy proposals that have started to emerge from that. And then hopefully get some feedback from you folks about, uh, where those proposals are landing and, um, what you think about them. So, um, let's get started. So for the last year or so, um, myself, Paul and Paul Rabidu, uh, or sorry, Greg Rabidu, um, our consulting architect have been looking at, um. The form based code and with especially through the lens of some of the issues that this body, uh, raised, um, when this project was initially scoped. So some of those, the issues that were raised were the sameness or perceived sameness of buildings that had been built and planned. Um, with regards to their architectural stylings, um, how they're related to one another and other surrounding buildings. Um, there were some concerns about how well these new buildings, uh, were functioning within the streetscape and how well they were tied into pedestrian, um, facilities like sidewalks and multi-use paths. Um, as well as the streets and just the overall street network grid itself. Um, and there were some concerns, some local concerns and, and, uh. Opportunities that were, that were mentioned about the east end of Market Street, the kind of housing, um, and buildings that this body felt would be most appropriate there. Um, and, uh, and then some open ended questions were also raised, you know. Is the, uh, what does the form base code look like going into the future with large properties such as. The Staples Plaza and the U Mall eventually likely candidates for, for large scale development. Does the code that we have right now serve the possibility of those being redeveloped at some point in time that we can't yet predict? Um, so taking all of that into consideration, um, that considerable amount, um, Greg got started on research, um. We provided you folks with an update a few months ago where we talked about some of the, um, the main themes that had come out of this. We have been looking at the. Potential of, um, integrating existing and new types of streets, uh, street types, um, talking about adjusting height. Uh, in the height requirements in the, uh, in the form based code area, um. And, uh, talk about, uh, we were all, we're also starting to talk about, um, setting a new, uh, or sorry, setting a more, um, standard grid and lining up some sort of like fuzzy connections, um, along in the street grid. Um, and also most importantly, and the thing that we're gonna be talking about the most tonight is to increase some flexibility in the building. Standards so that designers would be able to, um. Bring their, bring their A game to, uh, making buildings work, function, look beautiful lasting into the future. So. What we're really talking about tonight mostly addresses those, those first two bullets, so. The look and the feel of buildings and how they are able, how they are designed and advanced through our development review process. And also, uh, how that relates to building height. Um. So I think before we get started talking about those in great detail, it's probably important to look a little bit back at the. City center as an urban system, you know, this is not only just the area with a form based code and that's just close to city hall. It's also the area that contains that most of the, uh, um. Tax increment financing district. It's where our state designations are active and are drawing an investment from the private sector, allowing tax breaks for existing owners. Um, and giving us more local control over our streets and, um, some, and some of our, our, our zoning districts. So we have this tremendous opportunity to be encouraging the kind of growth that. South Burlington wants and needs and has been planning for in the comprehensive plan, um, and in a number of the implementation plans that have come out of our climate action plan as well. Uh, this include, you know, densifying housing, um, creating, uh, a transfer, strengthening a transportation network that allow people to get around, um, without a car on public transportation. Um, and updating a var, a broad variety of, of infrastructure, um, so. For a city center to work as an urban system. For a city center to work as an urban system and to work as a as an important distinct and high functional part of the city as a whole. Um we need to make sure that the kinds of investments that uh these types of tools are designed to attract are able to. To occur. And so we've been looking for. Paint points, areas where developers are finding it difficult to work with our regulations and bring forward the kinds of designs. That we want to see more of as well. We had a couple of roundtables with designers and then with another one with developers, um mostly folks who work more in the. Cause project management and conceptual stages of of developing as well as the financing part. We heard some really interesting things from them. And one of the things that we heard most clearly, especially from the design folks, was that. Our current system for evaluating buildings within the form based code, the um. Mostly the building envelope standards, how high something needs to be, how built out it needs to be to the streets. Um the number of building breaks and doorways, all these sorts of, you know. Geometric quantitative regulations about um the building sort of basic design. Were creating these pinch points where they were having trouble navigating. They were having trouble, for instance, um. Meeting like a uh thirty percent facade uh or glazing requirement on a primary facade, getting really, really close to, you know, twenty eight point four percent. But not quite to thirty percent without having to change large parts of their uh of their overall building design. Some more things for uh we heard some more feedback on on doorway spacing. People would be saying, you know, this doorway spacing minimum is. It doesn't line up for the kind this the size of of apartments that we want to build or the commercial spaces that we haven't envisioned. Um yet we mandate these things to be um to occur in um. Most of the in 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 uh in our buildings. And they have started to create, we we're hearing reported, um areas where designers are being forced into doing stuff that they. Um feel is contradictory to a a the success of a building as a whole. And um can actually have some kind of some some sort of count like counter intuitively can be. Making these buildings that are meant for 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 function or flexibility, less so. Um, so we took that in mind. We also, you know, balanced some of their feedback against. The original goals of the project and what we know about our own code and and whatnot. Um, and we've caught with some initial. Policy proposals and I want to walk you through those two right now. So, sorry, Paul.
Just the first one, have the discussion, then we'll go to the second one.
Yeah, that works for me, sure. So the first policy proposal we have that emerged from this research phase was to. Recommend that the current building envelope standards be uh which are rigid minimums. Um expressed in numbers be replaced with something more flexible. What we're recommending is a um points based. Uh review, design review process that would essentially. Um deconstruct the building envelope standards into different categories. And then award points for excellence in design for um. The projects that go above and beyond in certain or all categories, hopefully. And the way it would work is that the number of point, it would be required, each project would be required to score a minimum number of points. We're working with a number ten at the moment, though that might change. In fact, all points that we're going to name here are really just placeholders um for the for discussion sake, so please keep that in mind. But what we would require is that each building or project accumulate a minimum number of points. And then also require that each category have its own minimum number of points. So you'd have to score broadly as well as. Deeply in order to be able to um uh get your project approved. Um this would reward, this make sure that we still are that each build uh that each building and each project. Has a broad variety of the types of different elements that are important for a building, so. Street interaction, some kind of distinct roof profile and break. Um some kind of facade requirement that makes it visually appealing and not some kind of monolithic structure. Um that's sort of and some kind of outdoor, public or civic amenity that is built into the building or tied in with its overall site design. Um within these, though, we feel that there is room for in not, if not interpretation, there's room for choice. As to which exact method of providing these goods is the most appropriate for that site, that building. That designer and all the other various, you know, variables that go into how a building might 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 be. Ultimately built designed and built out. Um the purpose of having an overall point accumulation that is higher than the total of the minimums for each category. Is that we don't want people just doing one little bit from each category, calling it a day and building a. Building that adds up to nothing. We want to make sure that they are still challenged to bring their best and to um. To build to what is actually being um demanded of them by their community, by the environment, by the site itself. Um and by the time that they are building it, designing it in. And so we feel that this pro- that this. Um this structure allows for greater choice while still holding developers and designers. To the minimums um for all the elements there that this body and. Um and others have, you know, our our overall regulations have expressed are being the sort of the core values, the things that we can't live it out. From uh from each project. So that would be the basic um structure of of how this works.
Nick, could you elaborate a little bit on street interaction?
Yeah, sure. So street interaction is um.
What is included and there's a.
Yeah, yeah.
Question in which was the scoring will be done by the D R B.
Right now, Michael, the 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 whole form based code is administrative. Um so we would um as drafted, still look to have it be administrative. Um there are components, as you look at these points, this is a little bit conceptual at our stage right now, but as we look at these points. Um our goal would be for it to be very clear, because under state law for something to be administrative, it has to be. There's not, there's not an interpretation, but there's different ways to be very clear. So one way may be. Um numerical like the door spacing standard right now that says it's twenty six feet or something like that. Another way to be clear might be to say, might be to define. The characteristics of a grand entrance, for example. So a grand entrance. Um plays the most prominent role in the bill. I'm making words up right now, but it is the most prominent role in the building. It is uh i- i- its components reach um to the top of uh the floor, it's wider than it is tall. The doors are typically, you know, uh e- e- extended width and it is a fo- you know focal point, et cetera. And then maybe have some illustrations of different versions of this and then say, anything that meets those criteria applicant. You're good to go. So it might be another way to be clear um without being numerical.
And what does the builder or developer or owner get for these points?
Um so in the structure, there would be a minimum number of points necessary. So let's say there's four categories for simplicity sake. Let's say doing um a base level of any of these things gets you one point each. So there's four points. You still would need to potentially get six more points total. So you could pick and choose from amongst.
accumulate points by picking from a menu of.
Right, and then the other part of the conversation with you all is that points can also. Be used to create a race upwards. So what could the city offer? To make somebody want to achieve more points? So let's say there's a minimum of ten. What happens if you decide to make a building that has fifteen points? That is. Uh above and beyond the minimum, how do we reward you for going above and beyond the minimum? And we have a twist on that that we'll talk about when we get to heights. Donna?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, you hit on many of the topics that I think we talked about. There's one that's not on here.
And that's why we're here to talk with you all.
That was that we felt like there were all the buildings that were built were quite large footprints. And that there was a real need to have some smaller footprint buildings, not necessarily fewer units. But perhaps fewer units with the same entry. Um, you know, a smaller. And since basically we're building on what's left over at this point, it seems like it makes sense. That, you know, there is the ability to, and also some of these otter shaped lots. That smaller buildings are going to make sense and. And, you know, we did hear from one of the developers came in and said on this particular site, he said he'd like to see twelve unit, twelve units per building. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to have, you know, instead of fifty or sixty units per building to have. You know, eight, twelve, sixteen units per building in a taller footprint, but a smaller or. A smaller footprint, but perhaps a taller building. And that will give you a little bit more diversity. Of building types and with with smaller buildings, you can also. Perhaps create a little more interesting street facades because they're different buildings. It's not.
Brownstone in New York where they. On error.
What a lot of us were picturing at the time, you know, a lot of, because, you know, the discussion about the, you know, the. Space between building entries, it was kind of assuming much smaller buildings, you know, tall buildings, but not necessarily. Large, you know, really large buildings. And so I think that's still missing from this, you know, that's diversity of footprints. And, you know.
Uh, yeah, that's 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 a that's a great question. Thank you. I think that's first of all, there's um. There are a few, I think, specifics that we haven't included in this quite yet because um. We we wanted to, basically, we wanted to kind of run this overall structure um by the commission because, you know, we were. We, we kind of realized once we got to this point that that um. This because this address, this could potentially address it so many of the discrete topics that were originally scoped in this project that we felt like we should probably. Bring this before the planning commission approval and make sure we were on the right track of it. The. This footprint of buildings, the and what you're, I think you're talking about is kind of the, what a lot of folks call the missing middle housing. Um where it's somewhere between a, you know, a a. It may have elements of a larger apartment building, but maybe not the same like unit density in that actual building um. We have uh.
I don't think that's usually what people refer to as the missing middle. That has more to do with cost of units. Um, you know, and.
I've heard of you both. I've heard, I've used both ways, I think.
Both ways?
Yeah, I have heard that before in some.
Yeah, it's a size building that you don't see built much anymore, but you know, it, I think there is. Uh there is, in older cities, you see a lot of that kind of building. It's predominantly.
You do, you do.
So what I, oh, um, sorry. There there is one comment, I guess, I want to make this, maybe just a miniature small null that. I, that's right, this is one one issue I've been made aware of um. That why you don't get those as much anymore is that. I may be wrong with this, my understanding is most areas, including South Burlington, if you have a multifamily unit that's four stories. You need two distinct stairwells, which means that you kind of have a certain. Minimum amount of space interiorly and they all will use access to both the stairwells. You kind of can't have a single stairwell with. Multiple units kind of coming off a single landing, so it means you kind of lose. A lot more interior space relatively as the building gets smaller. And with those brown cells going up, those regulations exist. And I've heard the argument made that the regulations went in to try to reduce essential fire reasons. Though arguably with modern being materials, that's less of a hazard than it was, you know, central go when the regulations went in, but. You sort of see it in um, I believe in the buildings going up uh near the Mar 32 in the Shaws. You've got this um, it's like four units per floor and then it's like, it's a core floors, the eight units and like some office space and some um. What's it called? Uh and some commercial space in the round four. But if you start with the floor plan, you essentially have two giant stairwells, like twenty feet from each other. Which means there's a pretty big gap in all the building, that there's just nothing there, just stairwells, multiple stairwells. And that I do think is part of why those smaller ones, like buildings like that are less common, not possible, but it's something I guess to be. Aware of the four four brownstone, one unit each for, I don't think is legal currently from fire code regulations, which. I don't know, that might be.
There, those are kind of technicalities. I mean, you know, it's like, it's, it all comes down to economics.
Exactly, it makes the economics.
And it has more to do with the elevators and the current elevator code in South Burlington alone.
I guess my point is trying to make the technology technology m- m- matter because if it comes down to economics. And it's sort of a make or break kind of thing, you're gonna want to go with the building that allows you to kind of break even versus one that's hard to make.
We did, we did, when we were talking about the other, the development uh near the lakeside. That he was very specific that he was looking at twelve unit buildings. And so I think that there's there's a way to do this economically, it's.
So if, could you go to the facade one, facade and building breaks?
Yeah, certainly.
So I know it's skipping ahead, Paul, to like a couple sections ahead, but the reason I say that is because um. The the point of this section, I think, is to create the illusion. Of what Donna is saying is missing. So I wonder if maybe even in this section. You could actually get more credit by actually providing separate buildings because it's, it's kind of almost what this is trying to. Create the illusion of. I mean, isn't that the whole point of like creating building breaks and making it look like there's different buildings next to each other? Like they're not actually doing it, which is what you're saying, actually do it, but maybe.
I just wanted to make. Smaller buildings where they could be smaller.
But maybe some of the points, you could get points here for actually having smaller buildings.
Yeah, um, so.
I don't know, because that's what we're trying to emphasize. You know, we're trying to create something that's different than what's already there. Isn't that the whole point of this?
Yeah, it's not a bad idea, I think.
I don't. If that's something we think would add to the streetscape by having differences, then.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe it could go.
So part of, um, I think maybe we hit on, um, one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this proposal here now at this point is because. Feedback like this is, um, we're hoping is easily integrated into a flexible um system like this. So it's more, you know. If a a sort of a deconstructed design with more buildings occupying a single lot or um just smaller. Uh buildings in general is something that we want to be rewarding through a a a race to the top system. Um that that rewards exemplary designs and I think that there's, that's that's really useful feedback and we can, we can bring back. Um something that addresses that more directly. And the other thing I wanted.
I just want to make sure, I'm not saying just smaller, because I know we'll talk about height, just maybe diversity of footprint. I think is what Donna was saying, so I wouldn't want that to be misinterpreted as like one teeny short. One story building, but like.
Certainly, yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
And along with the, you know, smaller footprint, you know, allowing for some zero lot lines, you know, so that you could have. You know, so that you you can have buildings look like they have the same massing. But, you know, some offsets and things like that, but um but it would. It will allow you to have multiple building entrances, not just, you know, not just a facade that's broken up into different parts, but. Physically different buildings, but connected. Uh physically connected, they could even have, I mean, you can have a um, I forgot what it's called now, but. A point of egress, if you can't have a second stairway that you can have, um, you can have an entrance, you can have an exit into another building.
Mm hmm.
You know, into an adjacent building or something. Uh there's so many different ways you can do it, so it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit. I'd let the designers kind of come up with ways, ways of utilizing this, but but to emphasize the importance of having some smaller building footprints.
I think that's a, that's a fair point to just bring up. Um you you gave an idea, Jessica, of um smaller footprint. Another one might be, there's nothing that prohibits. A zero um foot setback currently in the T four, T five, we just haven't seen any built. Maybe there's an option in there to say, if you choose to make a, and essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's essentially a fire separation exists. Between two buildings that are attached. Maybe you, maybe that's a way to get points is to have a separate building that happens to be physically attached and, you know, I. I don't know if we want to get acquaintance to the level of detail of the emergency address, but that kind of thing being not just allowed, but. Being encouraged to be part of the variety. But can you speak to the lot lines briefly, uh the sorry lots?
Yeah, so um, you know, one of the things that that our consultants report is looking at is the. Transition to infill and small lot development that is going to be happening regardless because of just the economics of of uh this area unless. A bunch of people start selling lots to one another and merging them, it's going to be a lot of small lots being developed um. You know, piecemeal or individual as individual projects. And so. We are, we wrote this or suggested this policy um in large part with that in mind, so that a smaller. Um building could have more options for where it locates its instances, for instance. Um rather than having them mandated at a particular spacing as. Particular spacing as well as facade requirements, um that, you know, as standard facade requirements. So. We actually see the, you know, a move towards a system like this one, that this one suggested as one that would unlock. The potential of smaller parcels to, to host buildings that would be complying with form based code and indeed would. Would be performing closer to what, where we're really hoping them to be, you know, into the future.
Um, wait, go on then, Paul.
Yeah, um, I wanted to refer back to Colin's description of uh the house with two. Two staircases there, uh, it's, it's quite an efficient layout for as far as the footprint is concerned, because you have. Um, and each of the two has four, can have four levels and the basement, and there are thousands of them in, in Montreal. Or you have one on top of the other and you have one staircase that goes to the upper and the. But you have a, a single, a common entrance and then two doors. One goes up and one is on that level. It's also a very efficient use of land. Um, and uh, it's very, very urban. Um, you know, it's a, it's a cityscape that's familiar. All over the place.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think we, no, I, I, I agree. That's a, an interesting forum. I think we might be talking about two slightly different things here. I, i- in this case, talking this story, it's four stories high and you have one entrance leading to or two internal ones that basically. All go to the same four land.
Yep.
Versus in New York City, where I've seen a lot of are just one staircase. Going to four landings and then the space that would be taken up by the other staircase is just. A bed or something. I think that's more the point I was trying to.
Oh, you mean that would be a, a single, you know, dwelling unit, not two.
Yeah, I, I was saying a lot of the classic brownstones are skinny and one staircase internally and. That is trick, but I think we made, I perhaps I'm not aware of some alternative egress things, but that is, you know, the sort of make.
Yeah, small. Small foot, the, the key is very small footprint.
Yes.
Buildings are.
But that's what we're talking, yeah. No, I, I, I doubt, I guess perhaps I am not an expert on the alternate ways of perhaps complying with that kind of requirement.
Um, Paul?
Um, since this is uh, this will require a change in the land development regulations. Then we will be having public hearings then on this. And will Greg meet with us before the public hearings?
So the plan is that uh tonight, we're gathering some initial feedback. We're getting your questions. What are subject areas that you need to uh have looked at? Um, your first meeting in December, uh Greg is going to join us and um. You know, once, you, once he knows what some of your questions and concerns are, he can think about them a little bit and then he'll be there as your uh. Expert at your next, at your December twelfth.
Glad to hear that Greg's going to, because my root question tonight was going to be, why are you keeping Greg sequestered?
So you're not keeping him sequestered. He is scheduled to come.
So on the public hearings will be after the first of the year then probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I have just a kind of a question about how this works. So this, this looks like it's set up to say like what the current standard is. And then for each of these sections, it gives a list for alternative compliance. So and then there's points like. Do you get points for the minimum standard? And or the alternative compliance, or you're just required to do them? Yeah, no matter with zero points.
That's a great question, Jessica. Thank you. I think um, that's, it's still a little influx, the actual like mechanism of how it's supposed to work, what we. The function though, the, the, the outcome that we're, that we want is that something from each category gets done. Um, now that may be, we may, you know, the planning commission's feedback may be that there are some things that just. Every building needs to have like specific things, you know, let's say for the sake of argument, that's every building needs to have a skylight. So in the, you know. Glazing category, the basic requirement is you have to do a skylight and everything else can be something else. I'm just using that as a, as something that we would never actually require for the sake of argument. Um, the, i- if using that as an example, the. The add, the add-ons or the alternative compliance could be, um, you do, instead of one big skylight, you do a bunch of different smaller skylights. That could be alternative compliance. That could be worth the same amount of points, or it could be that um. You uh install for extra points, you do the basic regular skylight and then you just add on extras or you have um some kind of other glazing. Um, and window scheme that you add to the primary and secondary facades or something along those lines, something in the same category, something that. That achieves a similar function and a similar purpose, but maybe does it with a little extra aesthetic flair. Um, maybe toss a little bit more, maybe uses premium materials. Um, maybe just kind of does more of the thing that we already want to require, but goes beyond what we. Recognize is like the, the minimum that we should be asking people. So the, the, the. Um, I know it's a bit of a vague answer, but the, the, the fact is like we. We, we're, we're, I think, we, we're going to be refining the mechanisms of this a little bit based on what we hear is truly like truly important and what. Cannot be missed versus what the planning commission feels like is. More substitutable for one another, what, where, where the planning commission feels like more choice is something that they want to um reward and where the planning commission feels like. Um, we want to be more prescriptive.
Can I go, I guess, just to really very clearly just make sure we understand that. So what we should be doing is looking at the. Current standard and then giving you feedback if it's okay if somebody alternatively does. Say a grand entrance or on it.
So, yes, we'd like to start one step above that though. So likely, next, next absolutely right. Likely using this as an example, um, doing the minimum door spacing that is in the current form based code might be worth a point. Um, looking at the grand entrance. Maybe that's also a point, or maybe in another version of that, that's a lot more expensive to do that. Maybe that should be worth two points. So while it's still replacing, it's more valuable as we, as, as you go further down, some of them say, you know. An alternative is to do a much larger uh step back of the building. That's an expensive thing to do. So while it is. Substituting, it's substituting with a lot more cost and so it should give you more points. That's why it's still a little bit um up in the air.
Yeah.
Um, where we'd love to start your feedback is. Um, w- we debated not putting the bullet points in here, um, because where we'd like to start is. These four broad design categories of interacting with the streets, the site amenities and their interaction. The um building, the, the, the facades and the heights and, and sort of roofs of the buildings. Are these the sort of, you know, these are the four areas that Greg identified as major features of. A building that, that make them different from one another. Donna, you shared, you know, the, the size as well. Um, are these the right framing of the categories in your mind and or do you want Greg to come in and. Uh, at, at the, at your December meeting and talk with you about those. That's, I think, the first area of feedback we'd love to get. And then, you know, broadly, are we on the right track as we think about? Um, the ways in which this, these um. These um, four categories would then be. Uh, articulated through a point system. I think that's kind of where we're at for this meeting.
And I interrupted Helen, so you should.
No, no, I just was going to follow up with yours, trying to understand the points, but I guess that isn't the point for tonight. Um, my comment, I think you, the design categories are good ones. I'm curious though. If to Donna's concern about actually um. You know, giving um support or encouraging the smaller footprint. Which might require a height change if that can be captured. In that category, or is it whole, is it wholly a fifth? Category. Do you follow me? Yeah, I, I think there's, I mean, that's an extra category because I'm, this, this other thing that's occurred to me, it's a whole other category too. And you can just, you know, just put it in, put it aside somewhere, but think about it. And that is just the, the way the housing is structured. Um, I read a whole book about co-housing.
Okay.
You know, which incorporates some of these earn additional points by the common spaces, things like that. But it, it's also a way of having a building actually be a community where. I think you'd have a hard time saying that. The buildings that are there now are communities. You know, there are a lot of individual apartments where people hardly ever know each other. Um, because that's what apartment buildings with long hallways are, if people that. Might, you might know somebody there, but more likely you'd never see them.
Agreed.
Yeah, and the sort of co-housing thing, it's, it's just a different way of, and also has the advantage of the, um, the apartments themselves can be quite a bit smaller. Many of them are, 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 you know. You know, I mean, they can be family spaces, but, but a lot of the apartments tend to be smaller because of the community amenity spaces. Oh, you know, in a. In a co-housing. Co-housing, yeah. Yeah, you tend to have smaller kitchens, you know. Do that with the workout room or the community space, but it may not build the kind of communities. Well, and also, it's a, it's a, it's a different, it's a different uh. Yeah, governmental structure, so to speak. You don't just, you don't just pay rent to somebody. It's like there's a, there's an organization that runs, that lives there, that runs the. That runs the building.
Yeah, but I, I agree, giving, giving a bunch of bonuses, that does seem to be. Consistent with a lot of what we're going for in terms of goals. So, yeah, yeah, I, that does seem like, this does seem like a. Create a good way, please stop, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, there are aspects of, of co-housing that, like, like a terrace, for example, which.
Like what?
A terrace.
Or a terrace.
Uh, could be maybe the top of the top story of the building has got some larger. Penthouse type apartments and there's an outdoor terrace, you'd have to have a setback for the, for the apartment itself. But maybe, uh, you know, access to, to, to the outside.
Sure.
Uh, you've got balconies here somewhere, but.
Well, the Hyatt and Roof profile suggested that. Some of the roof profiles would be, you know, farther up the building, which would provide a terrace that for that floor.
Is community garden some kind of thing that could be integrated into that too? Like, like shared gardening spaces, that kind of thing, I don't know, just spitballing ideas.
Um, so Duncan has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, um, I, Donna, I, I get what you're saying about changing. Building envelopes and stuff, but it seems to me that asking for smaller buildings in city center seems kind of counterintuitive to what we're trying to do here. So, okay, all right, that's.
Go up.
All right, that, that.
Just more.
But I think you need to be careful when you say smaller buildings, because I, I think the perception is, no, we're trying to get as much as we can here.
I think it's a.
And if you say smaller buildings, people are gonna be like, that's not what we're, okay, all right, all right. I, I think that's an important distinction. Yeah, I think that is an important distinction to make.
It feels much more like facade related, you know, like you're standing outside and you see something that's. Maybe a more narrow rather than like the whole block. Yeah, so I, I agree Duncan, I think it's a good distinction.
Um, so I'll just, I'll address a couple of those discreetly. Um, the. One of the category or maybe, it's not really an official category, but towards the end, you'll notice that there was a um, another. Category-ish list of things, um, such as, you know, domes, spires, other significant architectural features. Um, this is something that Greg suggested as a, as a sort of a fifth catchall category, if there was something. Uh, we could have a list or um some, some description of things that um would be. You know, really interesting, bold, unusual, unique, um, that would add a lot. To a, a building or, or a project, but we felt wouldn't be necessarily something that we needed to mandate, but would, you know, score. A, a, a decent chunk of extra points. Um, now, I, I, I wonder if, if uh, a co-housing. Ownership structure, um, or cooperative ownership structure, uh, or some other element of co-housing that we wish to. Um, promote might be one, an appropriate thing to add to that category and to say, you know, this is one of those things that we're not going to mandate. And really isn't substitutable for something else important, but it is something that if you wish to pursue, we're going to reward you handsomely with. Um, you know, uh, easy compliance and uh, and, and perhaps some other kinds of, some uh, other kinds of incentives that. I would like to talk about tonight, yeah.
You could even leave it a little bit open ended, you know, if somebody else can think of something else nice that they'd like to do and say, oh, do I get points for this?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. We were kind of hoping to leave a, a certain um, amount open for that. My, I was saying, so wait, so we're proposing is like sort of a fifth kind of. Grab out like sort of castle miscellaneous without any kind of minimum point requirement to it. Is that what you're thinking or these will be categorized in the four? It would, the idea as it stands would be just a sort of a, a place to earn extra points. Um, but um, it's really like, I don't want to draw too much attention to it because it's really sort of the most underdeveloped area of our. Potential point system. This was really just one of those. Wouldn't it be interesting if we could figure out some way to reward someone taking a bit of a risk? And doing something that they felt strongly about, but that we would never require, um, and we don't think. Be an appropriate substitute for the things that we do require.
Um, Duncan and then Helen.
Yeah, um, Colin's question from, from, but uh. An operational context is the idea that, I, I think the design categories are fairly good. Um, certainly open to adding one or two, but um, is the idea that there would be a menu that would be provided to. Developers with e- within each category, then they would select items from that menu, or how would that?
Yeah, um. This is where we get into the thorny issue of this entire project, which is how to be. How to encourage and allow creativity without being overly prescriptive. You can't really prescribe creativity. Um. But uh, without some prescription, you get um, you know, a little race to the bottom. So. Right now, we are imagining this more like TDM where there is a menu. Um, than not, but we are, we have been talking this entire time about how to phrase things generally. And like the overall strategy of how to phrase things with an eye towards, you know, eventually codifying this in the LDRs in a way that. Um, steers with a light touch and uh suggests outcomes rather than prescribes them and allows. Tries to strike a balance between make, describing the, the minimum of what we need to see. Um, and making sure that there are some standards and also allowing designers to, to take that and. And, and work with what, with, with what they've got, basically, whether that's, you know, a really great idea or a really good deal on some materials or. You know, a particular, a unique, um, site layout or something like that, that offers up some certain opportunities that a more standard one doesn't. We want to make sure that people have that. The, the ability to take advantage of that. But. To your question, I think what we would most likely do is be more prescriptive in the, in what is, if we're going to establish a minimum, something that cannot be deviated from. Or something that can only have one or two options that could be substituted for, for it. That's what we would be more prescriptive with, and then we would probably be more um, general or a little bit more um, open ended on the sort of like. Points accumulation stuff, just so we're covering our bases, but still suggesting, giving some direction to where people can take. Like the direction that we want people to take things uh to go in.
I mean, you don't want to be, as you said, too prescriptive, otherwise that will kill the innovation, but. General categories and let, and let the designer or the builder or the owner. Fill out the details.
Right, and, and this is, this, this is the tricky needle to thread of being uh, um. General enough to allow them to fill out the detail and specific enough that it meets the state law standard of being a administrative review. That it's not a, you know, the staff person and the um architect are having a philosophical debate about the results. So how do you be specific enough to say what does it mean to be a, it's in the example, a grand entrance? Specific enough that if they meet, that if they propose something that qualifies, that, then they get a yes, we're not.
Well, like, like outdoor space could be a, a general category, for example. And let the designer figure out how to do it.
Um, Duncan, did you finish? Um, then Helen and then Paul?
So, uh, so my question is, um, what are the incentives? Do you need, what, I guess one is the, what's the base requirement for points? Do you have to have, if we have five categories, minimum, you had to do five points and or. Um, and then how are we incentivizing? Um, developers or architects or whatever to um, make this building really special, really different.
So.
Um.
So to answer the first question, Helen, imagine that's just for, for, for simplicity sake, let's say that. In each category, you have to do at least one point and that is the, that is the lowest end of the spectrum on any one of these things.
And the current standard is not one.
Let, let's say that's one point. Let's do, so let's say the current standard is one point. But that gives you four points, you have to get ten for your building to be approved. So then you could choose to say, well, I've gotten one point from every category, but then. I really believe in public space, so I'm going to get six more points.
I really believe in public space, so I'm gonna get six more points in public space, or I really believe in high-quality. Architecture and materials, I'm gonna get my six points there. So you would have your choice in, you know, with some guidance about. Um, where you get your additional points to get to your minimum total, so the, the idea there is. To, in response to the concerns of the planning commission and and uh, as expressed, of always resulting in the same thing. Giving some choices so that, um, you know, I I've been, we've been thinking about something Donna said, uh. A couple of meetings ago, which was, he said, you know, architects are always trying to do right thing by their. Uh, by their developers, they're often given a pretty tight box to go in, and I believe your exact words were something along the lines of. If an architect gets to do one thing, that's a really great add-on, and that's, that's often where where architects are today. So how do we give them the flexibility to find the one thing that matches well, that doesn't have to be the same one thing that the next door one was? And not just one thing, but you know, building off your thoughts.
Pretty good.
Yeah, nice talk.
Um, so that's functionally, and then what we.
Okay.
Talk about incentives.
Yeah.
I think that's the next part of this conversation of. What can we bring to the table that makes somebody not just want to get ten points, but maybe wants to get fifteen points, or. If they already want to do fifteen points, that they're being rewarded for doing so, that we, the word.
Right.
And, you know, this is always the catch with these things, and that if they choose not to. Go above and beyond, that we're still happy with the outcome. Because somebody, you know, by definition, above and beyond means above and beyond, and so we want to make sure that the baseline is something we're always happy with.
Uh huh.
And that. Above and beyond is something that we're even happier.
Excuse me, I'm not quite finished. The development of the incentives is sort of the next step.
We started to work on it a little bit, um, but we wanted to sort of, before we, we fleshed that out entirely. Um, and spend a lot of time on that, if we are a hundred percent on the wrong track, this is a good time to let us know.
Yep. Thank you.
So, um, form-based code is uh, based on streetscapes and building envelopes. In uh, in uh, in in relationship to the transect that they're in. So, um, what this looks like to me is streetscapes and building envelopes. And you're awarding points for people to do what my understanding was that they were supposed to do. Uh, with what makes code in first place. So, and the reward for that at the time clearly was, if you do this, then. You will avoid a lot of the kinds of things that you have to go through in the DRB. That, that was the incentive was, you know, we'll give you a pass if you do what we want you to do. So that seems to have gotten lost a bit, and our intention was with all of this. Was to actually build a beautiful downtown South Burlington, that was the idea, it was a beautiful city that. People would want to come to from all over the world, like, you know, we thought like Church Street or like, uh. Faneuil Hall or, you know, I mean, a number of places that have become famous for being. Beautiful, attractive places that people want to come to. So it seems to me, and I think people in South Burlington feel this way, that we failed to do that, that we have not built. A beautiful city at all, that we've built pretty much. Stock kind of, I think, I would say Soviet architecture, it's the term I use for it, but you know, very square buildings, very plain.
We didn't build them though.
No, we didn't build them, but I mean.
Is different and interesting.
These two buildings, this one and Aloud Square are different, the others are all. And I think the reason we're here.
We're, we're gonna let Paul finish his thought.
Well, I've been, I've been not finishing my thought for ten or twelve years now. I think that what you're, I hope what you're trying to get at with this is. Gee, we really wanted to have a beautiful city, let's try to buil- build a beautiful city, you know, I hope that that's what your incentive is here. Um, and uh, my understanding is that that was what Form-Based Code was rigid, was really originally about. And I think it was people's expectation that that's what it was about, you know, I think. The disappointment is, who was that beautiful city that we thought we were gonna have, you know, so. Um, if that's the direction we're heading, I'm fine, but if we're headed in the direction where. Well, this has been too much trouble for the builders and developers and landowners, and you know, they did the best they could, and. You know, maybe now a point system that awards them for something, you know, then, then I think we're even in deeper trouble than we've been in. So, you know, uh, I really would hope that we. What happened to the, the reward for that? I mean, did the developers get the pass that they were supposed to get? I mean, that was the idea, you know?
So, um, that's a really good question, Paul, and um, we've gotten a lot of feedback on it, and I'd say that's, um. There, there's some feedback that there are opportunities to streamline the process. Such that the reward of you submit a thing that is complete. And that you get a a shorter um, review, uh, we've gotten some feedback on some ways that we can improve on that. Um, one of the areas that we got feedback on was that. Um, designers who were looking to be a little bit creative. Found that determining whether that creativity was approvable or not. Was a slowdown in the process, which of course, the developers who, who are. Who, for whom the designers are working are saying, well, then cut bait and go to the thing that we know, you know, mathematically works. And so, the s- s- some of the purpose here is to say, give guided flexibility. So that an, an applicant who knows, who, who tries to, who, who wants to do a thing like, put. One of them talks about material, you know, fifty percent high-quality brick or stonework, they know they'll get points for that period. So it's, in, in our view, it is taking exactly what the Form-Based Code is trying to do. And in a guided way, give clarity as to different ways to get your. Um, approval in that fast timeframe. So to get that exactly what you're saying, so to me, this is intended to be rooted very much in the Form-Based Code. And respond to some of the feedback that we've received, that it is not clear enough. Today, what alternate designs than what you've seen can get a quick approval?
Hmm, that's too bad, because there have been some, there have been some nice buildings built in the meantime, I mean, that have not been in the Form-Based Code district. There have been some nice buildings built on the Shulman Road.
Hmm.
Uh, that it looked to me like people took their understanding of Form-Based Code and said. Well, let's build a nice-looking building, you know, I think, uh, you know, I mentioned it before, that, the, um, what's his name, uh?
Larkin?
Yeah, that's a nice-looking building, you know?
Well, you'd be, you'd know that that building was designed by Greg Rabidus, who's the consultant on the project, yeah, so.
Well, let's build some more of those, you know, I mean, even that new building, that, that, yeah.
It doesn't stand alone, building.
But they should have all been like that, I mean, we really, we really, the thought was, we want people to come from all over the world to our downtown. Because it's gonna be so beautiful, you know?
I think this is an opportunity for us to revisit what the minimums are and what we're expecting. You know, because obviously, those buildings that got built, um, met our code.
Yeah.
And they're not necessarily what you were expecting, so we can, you know, I think maybe that's something we can, when we're looking at these, um. You know, often really make sure there's things that would enhance.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of Form-Based Code, you can really build anything you want, yes, I mean, it's like. The community, the community wants to build this, and so this is what we'll build.
Right, well, and I think the feedback has been, Paul, that the numbers might be a little bit too tight. Such that it results in, um, what appears to be sameness.
Repetitions.
Yeah, well, but you, you, you said that this was uh, complying with the minimum. There is nothing to stop a developer from doing more than they've done, and one, what we haven't discussed at all is. Uh. When we were developing the original Form-Based Code, there was a lot of talk about placemaking, mainly the space between the buildings. As being the, uh, what's important for community. Um, we are, we don't have it now, I mean, uh. My, to my great shock the other day, I realized I was driving down a cor- a corridor of walls that are all the same. Um, it's unfortunate, but uh, once things mature, we have sidewalk cafes and a freezer bigger. Um, and there's more activity here. Hmm, it might, the, the space between the buildings might be a little more inviting than it is now. Um, but it's, we missed an opportunity, I think, uh, Paul would agree, um. With it, because without having any flexibility, a, a developer just had to comply with the requirements and didn't want to. Um. Go out on a limb on his own and do something more. It's unfortunate, but it's a fact of life.
I don't think people would be going out on a limb, I mean, we, we told them what we wanted, I mean, like. Like brownstones, I mean, I thought that was pretty clear that that's what we're looking for, we were really looking, the. The, the towns that we were trying to imitate were the New England and Vermont towns and cities, you know, I mean. Church Street or even, you know, St. Albans with the dream, and you know, like the old brick buildings and. Parks and just, you know, so that South Burlington would look like. You know, any other city or town, only it would have been built in the twenty-first century with, you know, ultra-modern technology, I mean. That was the idea, was to build, you know, just a really beautiful old New England city that was built in the twenty-first city, twenty-first century.
Old, old buildings with modern materials, uh, but the problem is, the former committee did not own land.
Well, here's, here's the other thing, I mean, the Form-Based Code, the original document was a planning document. See, now, this is very much getting into architectural details.
Yeah.
You know, and so I think that's what, I think that's what was, was really missing from the first part, you know, it, it. It was establishing the planning objectives, um, except that it never included. It never included the pedestrian ways, I think if you wanted that, if you wanted that to happen, I think you had to actually say where it was gonna be. You know, and I think that's, that's, that's something that we learned.
And I think we always knew we had to go back and readjust Form-Based Code, and we did shortly after it was implemented.
Yeah, and, and.
Doorways and things, it was like, oh, this doesn't really work, so I think this is.
Next step.
The next step to make Form-Based Codes look a little more interesting. Um. And having lots of variety. And how you do that is, you know, how you incentivize that is, I think, a challenge.
I.
Cause it's so much easier to just pick something that you've done somewhere else and say, oh, I know what this can look like, I mean, you just go out to Williston.
Yeah.
Is there any way, I'm just sort of wondering, like, it, it sort of seems like there's particularly our old Form-Based Code that like. People found kind of developer, a lot found like, pretty samey, more repetitive, we're looking for ways to comply with them. Is there any way of like involving this process, saying? Like, for more kind of like, almost trying to break it, like from a developer's perspective, like, oh, if we were to do this. This is a really easy way to apply this, 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 and this place is boring block, like, is there a way to kind of like, almost. Involve someone who might know how to kind of almost stress test it, of like, see, can we make, is it possible to make? Boring stuff with this new set of codes and not wait till it's already built, like, it's, I mean, I don't think, I, I could not do that. I don't think, cause I don't, I'm on our deck, you know, but like, it's. Like, to sort of try to come up with hypothetical ways to make something crummy looking, and if it's too easy, suddenly you change something, I don't know if that's. Feasible or not, but it seems like that might be a nice alternative than waiting five years, like, oh no, we changed this, but now this bad thing's happening, you know what I mean? But I don't know, this is fancy thinking or whatever, I guess the most thing like a video game, you always have play testers try and think to see if they can break it. And then revise based on how people broke it.
And I, I think, I think we'd have to be really careful that we're really, um, comfortable with the alternative compliance options. You know, like the one, the one has like windows in what we currently ask for, but then when you look at the other ones listed below it. There's like no mention of windows, so it's, it's like, are you allowed to just? Do one of these non-window options and not have to do the glazing, um, you know, so.
But as an example, um, we require in upper stories thirty percent of the upper story to be windows. Some of the feedback that we've gotten is that that pushes up really tightly to the, um, to the stretch energy code. And so spacing that and making that all work, basically results in the same thing every time. A solution could be to say, an option might be that. You pro- provide, provide variety in the building in X, Y, Z way, and in doing so, maybe your minimum windows drop to twenty-five percent. And then you maybe have, you know, smaller windows for the bathrooms or something, but what you're getting instead is, you know, more substantial building articulation. Or something like that, so finding, that's one example where we specifically heard that our standard is really pushing up against. Yeah. There's not a lot of ways to accomplish a thing when we're right up the energy code.
It's, it's interesting that you bring up the energy code too, because this point-based system is something that the current energy code uses. Um, the residential energy code uses that, and so it's kind of an established method, the builders hate it, but I think architects can deal with it. Um, you know, engineers need to be able to deal with it, okay, builders themselves don't.
Good at adding up ones and twos.
Yeah, and the other thing, just, just to speak to toward, there, you know, there's certain parts of buildings that don't need windows. And so you shouldn't be forced to put in windows for parts of buildings that don't need them, and speaking from the standpoint of both. You know, somebody who appreciates wall murals, you know, and especially the ones in Montreal and Europe, occasionally you see these. These real three-dimensional murals and, this and, just, it, it just adds so much to a city to have that, a blank wall of art. You know, that, that, that really makes it for a special place, so don't be afraid of blank walls, you know? You don't want a whole blank building, but don't force somebody to put windows where they don't need to be. And I'm always, as a lighting designer, looking for, you know, nice blank walls, because in Montreal, they also do this. They create murals of light, you know, and it can make for, you know, it's, it's something that's hard to do if you don't have some blank walls. You know, because you just cannot light buildings if they're all windows, it just doesn't happen, so, that's my.
Um, Donna, we will take your detailed suggestions on how to create better lighting design anytime, so please, please fire away, um, on that one specifically.
So, sticking back at the questions you'd asked, I mean, it seems like we've at least partially touched on. Most of the questions in this part one, is there anything else that you were hoping for tonight before we? Talk with Greg the next time?
The, the third question is one that we haven't really touched very much on, um, and we're, we're sort of just reaching the stage of. Um, thinking about how do we make this a race upwards, um. So, you know, what are some things that we could incentivize to reach more points? One of the ideas, for example, that Greg shared, and this is, it's, it's too early now because it doesn't exist. But we are, uh, undertaking a parking management study, um, in city center, and that will, um. Say in areas like north of Williston Road or along San Remo Drive may include at some point. Uh, municipally-owned parking lots, and so one of the ideas that Greg tossed out was, um. Maybe if you re- get more points, you get priority access to, you know, booking some of that publicly accessible parking. For your tenants, something like that, you get priority use of it, so thinking, you know, I don't know if that one specifically is the right. It is, is, um, is the right thing, but thinking about how do we be really creative about encouraging folks to, to do. High-quality design, um, related to that, you know, uh, we, we just, um. So, so a few of us attended a, a planning conference where some developers were speaking about, you know, what are some of the. Uh, subjects that they're facing and, you know, construction costs and, um, and, uh. Related to certain kinds of development, um, and scale of building is, is a factor that they're all facing. That is making it hard to pan out numbers, so things that might traditionally have been incentives, like more height. May not actually be an incentive in the short to medium term.
Cause you need more steel beams.
Right, um, so, you know, we're open to creative thinking, um, we think. Um, we think that this is a really neat approach to make it a race upwards and, um, we're gonna be continuing. Uh, to speak with folks in the development community, speak with different departments of the city, speak with the community about. Um, what would excite folks to want to do higher, even higher quality than the minimums?
That, that seems like kind of a good segue into the racing upward part two building heights section, if that's.
Let's take it, let's take that segue. Yeah, sure. So, um. Our new LDRs uh, allow, allow for increased building height in other areas of the city, not in form-based code. Um, Long Shelburne Road notably allowing up to seven stories. That is higher than anything that's currently allowed in the form-based code. Um. So considering that fact, as well as you'll notice, um, on page four of the memo. There's a chart titled new buildings approved in city center by stories. We're seeing a clear trend that in the form-based code areas. The most buildings are being built in four stories already, uh, which is above the minimums. And, uh, so between those two facts. Um, and with a few other things in mind that we'll, we'll talk about. We're, um, offering, uh, the following suggestions as far as height. Um, raise, uh, building, uh, minimum heights, um, as per part two, um, raise minimum stories. So that would be in T three and T three plus? No, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, raise minimum stories to, uh, three stories across, uh, across the board. And then, um. Yeah, sorry. This has been an evolving, uh, one. Um, yeah, raised, uh, to, uh, T four and T five and then, um. Allow a maximum stories count of fourteen stories. The reason for this is, well, a number of reasons, I've already sort of touched on some of them. First of all, we're seeing, this would bring. Uh, the form-based code area in line maximum wise with the rest of the city. Um, it would also mean that, um, developers would be able to start thinking broadly about. Project like larger, taller projects in the densest area of the city. As far as minimums go, this would allow us to create an incentive to build below three stories. And we could then apply that incentive to the aforementioned, um, flexible point system. That could be one of the incentives that a developer could. Um, pursue for a, a higher scoring building, the, the ability to build down to two stories from the established minimum of three.
So with, with enough little add-ons, you could go from three stories to two stories.
Yeah, you can imagine a building that has some kind of exemplary design. Let's say it has some, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever that ends up looking like, might be able to take advantage of. That exemplary design to leverage that into a, a smaller overall, um, you know, requirement for the building. Oh, that, just, just to interject super quickly, that's an example in our, in our heads of how do we kind of create a win-win? We win if it's three stories because it's more the form. We win if it's, if it's not quite the full, the, the scale, but it is a higher quality.
Uh, may as clarification, I'm, you know, I'm not a developer. Um, so making a smaller building is more incentive, it's. We're awarding people by allowing them to build a shorter building.
So I think it's, it, we're trying to sort of flip the whole conversation as head. We're saying three stories becomes the minimum. If for some reason you are, you're. Two-story building, you must be even higher in the quality of the design. So I wouldn't describe it as a reward. I would call it as a. You know, if you really, really, really wanted to do a two-story building, we'll let you, but your design's gonna have to be higher.
Okay, I, I like.
So finding it that way.
Yeah.
Um, Michael?
Yeah, are we, are we also considering technical issues like, uh. A very tight building envelope so that it, uh, and, and renewable energy?
Um, that's all in the energy codes already?
Uh, it's. Well.
I mean, that's required by all buildings. Um, it is required, you know?
What about the, what about the, the insulation level, the tightness of the envelope?
That's, that's a building, that's a statewide building.
And how do we know that we're complying?
Well.
To do, that's part of, we were.
Commercial buildings usually come pretty close to meeting it, just because they do get reviewed at the state level. The residential build and a, and a multifamily residential building is considered a commercial building. So it's, you know, the energy code does tend to, and also it requires architects and engineers to be involved. In the projects, you know, so there's a lot more certification. It doesn't mean they're all making it, but there's a lot better.
So the question is if somebody does more than what's required by the, by the energy code, is, is that something we would give them points for?
I don't think you want to get involved in that. We already don't, we, we already don't get involved in it, in the energy code. I mean, I'm not saying that's a good thing. But, you know, you get all kind of pushback of saying, we don't know how to, we don't know how to review this. So I'm not saying that's a good thing. It would be nice if we had some kind of level of government which could. Handle that, but we don't. So I'd, I'd keep the energy side of things out of that and focus on the physical side of things and the architectural detail.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for reasons why we can't do it. Um, I'm looking for, um. Uh, something, there's, there's, there's got to be a way to do something, not, not say it's impossible. You know, let's look at the way that, look for the reasons why it can be done.
Are you back on the previous item where we were giving points for the form? Is that what you're talking?
As you could do it, you could.
Are you talking about here with the heights?
No.
I'm just curious, cause I guess I'm wondering, like, if I'm thinking about the form, um. Like, I think back to like Paul's point, we really want the building to like feel right. When someone's walking in and out and observing it, so like substituting in something that's not really the form. Feels separate. If we want to address that, it feels like it wouldn't be like, instead of windows, it'd be like. Separate from that point system, maybe.
Now, for example, roof design, uh, to, to get maximum solar gain. Uh, design and orientation. For example.
Um, Paul Ingles and then Donna?
Um, just would like to say that I am very much in favor of fourteen-story buildings. I think it's really important for us to build up. I've thought that for a long time, um. And I also think we probably, in response to it. Donna and Michael are talking about, um, I think we're long overdue to have building inspectors, although I do. Understand that applies only to residential, because we do, uh, essentially have building inspectors for. Uh, for commercial properties, right?
We have, we have building inspectors for the, um, for the code side of things, not energy code, but life safety codes for anything other than. Owner-occupied, single-family homes. That's, everything else is considered a public building under, under the, under the staples. So that's, that's what we do cover today.
So I'd like to see proposals for the fourteen-story buildings. Are you, are, yeah, I know, but I mean, some actual. You know, what this would look like in city center would be very interesting to see that.
So we'll do Donna and then Colin, if that's okay?
Yeah, I, I definitely put some notes down about the fourteen-story buildings too, cause I think, sure, I mean, we could do it. But there's a whole bunch of issues, other issues you're gonna get involved in, um, and that's gonna be like, uh, massing for. An area, one is solar access. You start getting into tall buildings, they actually work really well when you're next to a park. Or something where, you know, the sun shadow is not gonna completely block the sunlight from buildings that are adjacent. Cause that's a real problem. I mean, it's, and, um, but on, on that said, you know, on the north side of Williston Road. That would be fabulous to have some taller buildings. Probably not right on. I mean, there's definitely gonna be some setbacks. Um, and so I think the setback issue has to be, has to be raised. The other piece is that, you know, we seem to not have any sloped. Sloped roofs, because we've had such large buildings, it tends to be difficult to get sloped roofs on. But architecturally, I mean, it can make it for a very attractive environment. Uh, you can tell I've just been in Europe recently, you know, where virtually every building in Amsterdam. In the old section of Amsterdam has a sloped roof. They all have sloped roofs.
But they're only three stories, right?
No, there's six.
Six stories?
Six, five and six stories, almost all of them are. And I, and they somehow managed to cram elevators into those old buildings. I don't know how they do it. But, you know, actually, they, a lot of the buildings behind the facades have been rebuilt too. That's, that's.
Donna, to that point, point specifically, a couple of things in the last section where we talked about that Greg had recommended were, were that. One, um, architectural features that are above the, the top habitable stor-, uh, story. Um, don't have a height limitation.
Right.
Um, and two, there was, one of the areas of points was specifically to have a varied roof type from a flat roof.
Right.
Um, that does push against other requirements that exist in the energy code and in our own, our own regulations. The talk about solar-ready roofs and then installing solar on solar-ready roofs. And so another energy option might have to be taken if there's gonna be no solar panels, not to say. Um, uh, uh, flat roofs are the easiest way to do solar panels. It's not that they can't be done in others, but the efficiency of. Placement starts to go down, I guess.
Right, right. But, um, but, but I think, I think in terms of city center, the existing city center, I. I mean, I'd be hard pressed to say where, what spot a fourteen-story building might work. In, because, you know, cause everything's pretty uniformly four and five stories, four stories. And so all of a sudden you get a fourteen-story building. It's.
You know. The U Mall is fifty-five acres in size and is ripe for.
That could take.
Intense investment.
That could handle a tall building.
The, you know, the north side of Williston Road, as you mentioned, several spots, um.
Well, Shelburne Road could handle fourteen stories.
So that's not, that's not T four though, right?
It's not in base codes, uh.
I'd agree, that might be a separate question, I guess, maybe.
But, yeah, I mean, right near the lake.
Right near the lake, it would be a perfect place to have a fourteen-story building, but.
Are, are you? I think Colin wanted to say some things. Were you ready?
Okay.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I, I also, um, yes, second on Paul, I, I think fourteen seems like a pretty solid, uh. Solid number, um. My, I guess, but yeah, I guess that goes on. So I do, I guess have some concerns about how exactly it's gonna be built. One of my. Personal chief concerns is I wanna make sure that you don't have situation. I'd be, I'd be concerned the situation where you get a massive mode of parking and the parking space just gets way out of whack. With the, like, I, I don't want the whole use sometimes seen in my places. I think Toronto has a lot of these huge skyscrapers. Surrounded by these, both the parking, which is, I'm not sure, I, I just worry about the kind of walkability implications, like, I guess I, uh. I just probably informed, I, I grew up in town, about twenty thousand people, about, along North of Portland, so. If anything more rural feeling than South Portland, and it has a sixteen-four tall dorm in there. And it honestly blends in really well. It's, it's, it's got like pretty, as well set back from major roads, there's a lot of trees, a lot of globbies. However, because college dorm, there's no parking lot near it. And I think that honestly really helps how it feels. So. I guess I, I'm, so more saying, yeah, I like fourteen stories. I just would want to see that we have. Understand the implications of a building that size, and we kind of can mitigate some potential adverse things, of which one that me comes to my mind is just. Where do these cars go? Cause, you know, yeah.
Very happy to hear you say that, actually, because that is one of the things that we initially, uh, thought of and. Were concerned about too. Important to note that none of these changes, um, affect the requirement to build out building frontage to the degree that it would be required to. So a building that, you know, so you couldn't be, essentially be able to substitute. Um, height for frontage. So that, that is to say, there still would be street activation along, you know, uh, uh, along two, two sides of the, of the lot as well. And, and just the way architecture works, a large amount of that lot then filled in by a build, by a particularly tall building. So we are requiring essentially a certain amount of the lot be devoted to just building. Um, by our, by retaining that part of our, of our, of the current LDRs, uh, the front, the front is required. Um, there might be other ways to control the proliferation of parking on a given lot, but, you know, we haven't really talked about those yet.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think, I, I agree, that's good. I just want to, you know, I mean, I guess, if we're thinking, oh, it's an U Mall, it's kind of. Already that, so it's not any worse, but I guess if this, if we're, if we're doing this and it's like, I don't know, if, you know, for, uh, like. As an example, we have city places and actually have a four, four-story parking garage. Is that where I'm sent if, I don't know, but like, it's this sort of. I wanna sort of think like, we have fronts one side, but then if there's like six, six parking behind the building. I, that may be okay in certain locations, but like, I don't want them to be like, I don't know, hypothetically, say if there. Is, you know, a fourteen-story building in the massive U Mall lot, kind of near, essentially good front is activation on Dorset Street. But they still have this huge boat separating it from the back of the lot or something. I'm just worried about walkability, that's all. But I, and I'll say it's not all, but I just wanna make this, I think it's a problem, isn't really as necessarily as present. And he's got four-story buildings, I'm a little worried as stuff starts to scale. That's really all I'm kind of sorry to say, but. Overall, it's more, I just wanna make sure that we have some. Guardrails.
Yeah, that's fair and that's really good feedback. Thank you. Yeah.
Here's Duncan yet, and then Paul?
Yeah, I've shared, when I first read this, I thought it was a misprint. I wasn't sure.
We just thought a hundred and forty seemed too tall.
I, I had to do a double take and read it again, but, um, in thinking about it, um, Colin, you have a good point with parking. Cause I guarantee it, not all the folks living in a fourteen-story building are, are riding a bike. They need a place to park. Um, but, um, I, I, I think the, the, I, I'm not disagreeing. I think fourteen stories. If we could make it work would be great. The question is where would it work? Um, I think that's a real critical question, excuse me. And, and, you know, it would be interesting to see. If we took the current form-based code and, you know, sort of slotted where we thought those building, a building of that size would work. Obviously, U Mall being one, Donnie, you got a great point about the north side of Wilson Road. That's kind of a dead zone. Um, so, yeah, it would be very interesting. I mean, that's intriguing, but I, 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 I'm positive that. You know, members of the public reading that would have a similar reaction, they go, what? Um, so, uh, you know, I, I think that it would behoove us to really thoroughly think through where, how that would work. Um, and all the things that come with a building of that size. I'm not disagreeing with, I'd love to see it work. Um, but there's a lot of entrails with something of that size. And I, I think, again, I, I think that's a. Such a big departure from what we have, that it's, for a lot of people, it might be really tough to swallow and go, wow, that can't work. So just putting that out there.
Yeah, that's, that's good, guys. Thank you. Sorry.
Um, Paul was gonna go?
Uh, it seems that they've solved the water problem out here in terms of going down, right, for underground parking. For the most part.
Yes, yeah.
Expensive though.
Expensive but solved, yeah.
Yeah, so I would assume that a bill, a fourteen-story building, I don't, I'm, it's not something you know much about, but. There must be bedrock somewhere that this would have to be built, right?
It's not always the case in Champlain Valley.
I know, I mean, I know some crazy solutions I've seen for very large ones is the whole Cambrian rise one that's going up in the new north end. They've got like, I think it's like, like a two or three-story kind of huge parking structure. It's like, as you can park on top of it, essentially with the patio, it's, it's kind of bonded with a slope there. So they actually didn't have to dig down that far, but they kind of raised the ground up and sort of turned into like a patio area, like, they're definitely. Creative solutions to not having a huge honky, ugly parking structure.
What's the U Mall, um, the water situation or?
You mean, there was groundwater?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure. Um, you know, and interesting, you know, speaking of that specific property, you know, they've got an interesting. Uh, uh, asset slash liability, which is that they've got a thousand car parking garage that's sitting there and it's almost never used. So, you know, imagine if that could be used.
Do we know, is there a good reason? It's, it's usually gated, can't even get in. Do you know why that is?
Because there are two thousand other parking spaces at the U Mall.
Oh, so it's not like it's deficient, it's, they're not curating, they just don't wanna deal with people in there.
Right. So they do open it up at certain holiday seasons, but it.
Right, so they do open it up at certain holiday seasons, but it's really just because. There is not the demand to use it, and so.
Oh, it's ground floor, you can't go in?
I think you can use the ground floor, but not the upper three stories of it, and that's really just about, you know, managing.
To go up, yeah.
Right, because then you have to manage, you know, people being up there, so they just close it off, but it, but it's not a safety issue that I'm aware of, interesting, yeah.
Is this kind of thinking going on at U Mall now?
Pardon me?
Is this kind of thinking about fourteen story buildings going on at U Mall, do you think?
They, I don't know, but specifically fourteen stories, I would say broadly speaking, as they are thinking about their work, they are thinking about. Sub- substantial, um, being up, being compact, being urban, uh, when they do it, so, you know, I haven't. Had a conversation about the exact number of stories, but I think that they're not in any way, uh, worried about heights. And I think that they are thinking sort of methodically about how to do it, so that it's, uh, you know, that they're looking at the long view of it too.
So they are thinking about something.
Yeah, no, no, nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing active, no- nothing imminent, but they are actively, you know, interested in the property.
And they don't have to look like the nineteenth century, because they've already been a mall, right?
And they're right on that new bike bridge we're building, so that's nice.
So, I guess I need to be convinced, and I think the public does too, so I think this is something that we're gonna have to. Have some examples, I mean.
Right.
The decor towers is not something to emulate necessarily, I don't think people like go by there and are like, oh, we love this. One tall building we have in Vermont, and then. The hole downtown pointing that being like, oh, it'll eventually be twelve stories, is also like, I mean, it's kind of hard here in Vermont to picture what this might. Look like or feel.
Not so much a hole there now, though.
I know it's not a hole, I know it's not a hole, but. People already think of that as kind of like a depressed place, they've seen a hole for a long time, so saying, oh, there's a twelve story building, we haven't. We haven't experienced.
That's all very fair, at, at the same time, you know, I know around the corner from where that mall spot was, there was an infill building. Um, that's gone in next to what was the, the People's Bank, and it's nine, at least, maybe ten, and. You know, that's completely, you know, it didn't have a big hole associated with, there's no big dramatic story, they just did it, um, and so. I'm not sure that we would likely see a fourteen right off the bat here, but the economics are shifting in Vermont to where that's more. Ha- has the possibility, and I, I, that's really valuable feedback.
But I think, I think also, just, and I'm not saying we have to just go to seven, and then eventually after we get a seven, we can go to, you know. I'm not saying that, but I think just thinking through like. I mean, we've heard that next door. There aren't enough outdoor amenities, and then people don't have a place to be, so like, thinking through, like, if we're gonna have fourteen stories, what does that mean for? Amenities we need and parking we need, and is it just too much? Do we not have that infrastructure here? Um, and then also, is there a difference between T five and T four? Because right now, this doesn't talk about. I mean, it says maybe there's a transition zone, but um, I think that's something that we'll need to think through, you know, the way.
Only, the, the T five is currently just Market Street from Garden Street to Dorset Street.
It's pretty small.
This is all your own regulations, you can change wherever you want, so you could say, for example, you could say, the. Frontage of the U Mall property, or the north end of the Mew Mall property is T five, you. The, the, the primary distinctions between the T five and T four today, which is not written in stone. Um, are that the T five requires a commercial ground floor. And the doorway spacing is a little different, and there's a little more height, but all of these things are um up for. Uh, amendment, you could say, you know, uh, Paul, Paul spoke earlier about, you know, the relationship to streets, you could say that, uh. T five on Market Street must be commercial ground floor and T five on. Uh, on Williston Road, or pick some other street, is given all the other things, but it doesn't have to be commercial on the first floor, there's no rule that tells. The form-based code is your, our, the community's creation, so it's. It's what you wanna achieve.
Downtown should, would be, eventually would be Dorset and Market, the corner, that, the big corner out here.
Maybe that's a place to start with that.
Seems like the natural center to me, you know.
Though making that intersection more pedestrian scale may be a interesting challenge, but. Not that it can't be, I'm just always, I'm just trying to think like, how you make this a human scale place, and I.
We thought of a million ways to have pedestrian friendly, and I mean, at one point, we wanted to have the entire street be brick. With no um differentiation between bike, pedestrian, and auto, you know, that would slow the autos.
Or kill a few people, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, I think the end of the memo here kind of questioned what kind of information analysis would be helpful for us when thinking through this. I don't know if anyone else, hey, Michael. So if we need any more analysis to be able to figure this out, I think we should try to give some direction on that. I mean, we, we named a few things, like parking, open space, amenities, how would that change with such a bigger building? Talked about some solar.
Incentive, I think we need some more.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if there's anything else, maybe. We did hear one, um. Example, a spot we could go by. Um, and I, we can also open up to the audience as well before we end up. So maybe you can think about other information from staff, you can see if, does anyone in the room have anything for us? Okay, one.
Just real quick, um, Tim Barrett resident, um, ladder trucks can only go to six or seven stories, just the fire department, just for. Your edification, if you didn't know, um, but stand pipes help fight fires in buildings that are over that number of stories. But just so you know, the ladder truck can't go over six or seven stories.
Yeah, which we have a great point, Tim, we, we talked about that before, and that's, I think, why we settled at six stories in the current draft, so we'd need. Feedback on that.
That's achievable thing, get the feedback.
We'll get the feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious how Burley can solve that issue.
Yeah.
They do, they have different.
Yeah.
They also, they also have inside suppression systems.
Well, we'll get that from the fire department.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and then anyone online have anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you guys a follow-up email, because, well, I have a lot of notes, um, but. I, I think the height thing is great, there's obviously a lot of places in the city where it could go and not be creating very large. Um, shadows, not that shadows are the end of the world, um, in terms of public space and outdoor space. When you have more people around a park, a park gets used more, um, it's more eyes out there, ends up being safer. Um, and so it just means that you have more money to actually invest into the public space and keep it maintained better, um, and nurture it. So I think that's all good stuff for particularly a downtown area, um, there's a part of the city zone, um. Just to the northwest of the form-based code. Um, that would then have a lower height limit than the form-based code. Um, and this is the area right between the Doubletree and UVM, and I think. That's maybe the area most appropriate to have the highest buildings in the city, so I, I'd wanna look at that, I'd ask you guys to look at that area. Um, and consider how those heights can be changed or affected by this. Um, with fenestration and the issue with glazing, um, and the energy code. Uh, you'll notice that with a lot of buildings that go in that look ugly, like on Market Street, that there isn't much framing around the windows. Um, there's a little bit more on the building, uh, on Garden Street, closer to Trader Joe's. But if you have windows that are framed decoratively. It gives the impression of window space, even if there isn't as much actual transparency. So you could set a minimum amount of, of actual transparency or glazing of twenty-five percent, but still have that window accoutrement. Uh, help add up to a thirty percent to give that sort of appearance, um, there's even buildings that you can see that they have a bricked. Uh, you know, they might have a window shape, but it's just still brick in there with a different pattern. Um, because either there's actually a staircase behind there, or that's where actually bathrooms end up. In St. Albans, there's a nice port window, but it's not a window, it's just a giant brick, and it looks like a bulldog coming out of the window. Um, that decorates a building, it gives the same impression of fenestration that. You need somewhat of to be cre- um, seeable space, um, without actually reducing, um. You know, like the R value, uh, the same way a window would. Um, in terms of what Colin brought up about the staircase issue, I have a great video, I'll send you guys about that, Seattle. Um, did away with, uh, requiring two staircases until the building is over six stories. Um, and Europe is like this as well, it's really just the US and Canada that aren't. Um, despite not actually having better fire safety outcomes, um, and newer buildings ironically. So, um, I'll write up, uh, some summary stuff and get some media resources and send them out to you guys soon, thanks.
Great, thanks, thank you, you, I, you've had some great, um, description words in there, the accoutrement, and the, the fenestration, I'm gonna try to. My vocabulary here.
The last thing was actually from staff, uh, wh- what was the word you guys used for the basements?
Oh, the rusticated basements.
Guys, this, this is such a pet peeve of mine, if you look at any building in city center, you can see the form marks. On the foundations before they go into the ground, and the lack of having designed space there, I think makes things look really. Extra cheap, um, if you look at any, any place that's historic, you have these rusticated basement foundation stones. That are thick masonry, they hold up the building, St. Albans, I was just looking around there, because. They're the Shazzy Reef limestone, so there's fossils all over those stones. Um, and they look really great, um, supporting those buildings, but if you look at our buildings, we just don't have designed space. Between where the facade stops and the ground starts, and I wouldn't put that in the discretion area, I would make that a requirement. And everything else I'll email to you guys.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so hopefully that gave everyone some moments to think if there's anything that staff could help us. With to really visualize or start to think about fourteen stories or a different height or.
Well, could they, um, identify some potential areas, maybe that are not form-based code now, but we can always change that, yes. Or where you might put a fourteen story or a ten story building in South Burlington.
Sure, I think the focus of this project is on the city center form-based code, knowing that. Um, A, you just changed the heights in other parts of the city, so let, let that play out a little bit, and B, I think. You know, the, the, the city plan and a lot of the good discussion has been for years of, let's make sure that the core of South Burlington is our most urban place. So before we sort of, uh, launch the tall story. Outside of city center, you know, right now, we're inverted, where we say taller buildings are allowed outside of city center than in city center, so. Um, but we, we can take, we can take a look at it, I think, you know, we, we took initially. The approach for the purpose of this conversation of saying. The form-based code, T four and T five, with some exceptions of transition areas like, you know, adjacent neighborhoods, if you'd like us to refine that a little bit. Um, we certainly can, we, we, we didn't want to self-limit before you had the chance to have a conversation.
Well, I personally have a real, I mean, I totally agree with going up. I'm not sure, as I visualize city center, with the exception of the mall. Um, fourteen stories. Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Well, that's, that was my, that was the point.
Thought it would do, but I would certainly, I could envision it in, um, the mall area. But not on, um, Market Street, I think people would be beside themselves, and they wouldn't get it. So I think we have to be very, as, as Jeffrey just suggested, we need to really be. Careful about how we share that with the public and identify where are some reasonable places. I don't think Market Street is one.
But maybe we'll be convinced, you know, I, there could be with, with appropriate information and visualizing and. Examples maybe, I guess that's what I meant, like, I'm not ready to say yes, but I'm not against the idea, and I feel like the public's gonna have similar questions.
I was just wondering, is there, I mean, it would be nice to have a three D model. That kind of allows you to visualize, you know, different building heights, different building shapes and things, and I don't know if maybe the city can. Keep such a model so that when you get proposals, and you can see what it looks like in terms of.
Like the building.
No, no.
Digital model.
It wouldn't be good to mix a fourteen story building with one of four or fives here. But if you are in an area where you're gonna allow such high buildings. You would also allow other taller buildings, not mix them together, maybe ten stories and fourteen stories and twelve, that's okay.
But.
Seven even.
Yeah, but putting them with, mixed up with thi- this kind of setup here, which is four or five. Yeah.
Check this out.
I'm not sure, I want.
Apart from Alard Square, and I think this building next door, are there any other buildings with underground parking? Um, amongst the new lot.
Um, so. The four buildings facing onto Market Street right here all have, all have, four are being built with underground parking. The two. That, um, are at the, at the corner of Market Street and Garden Street that have been occupied are both, both have underground parking. Um, the large building, um, behind, behind Healthy Living has underground parking, most of them in fact do.
Okay.
One level of underground parking.
Okay, are we, um, yeah, ready to do minutes?
Yep.
Okay, we have October twenty-second.
I'll move them as presented.
Looks like a great meeting, um, all, any edits?
Yeah, one edit. Um, page three, uh, first line, first, uh, third, third paragraph down, first line.
Just so Sue can get the minutes, can you turn on your, um.
All right, yeah, it was the, um, page three, third paragraph, first line, where it says. Ms. Levon said it's hard to solicit feedback without real life examples, not exemptions. That was, that was what I said.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of approval with the one edit?
Hi.
That was unanimous, very exciting, um, we have other business, it's just the Winuski's, I know, I don't know if anyone has any. Comments on that at all, it's mainly in there for our information. We already covered our schedule, does anyone else have any other, other business? Okay, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Very good.
Good meeting, that was.
These buildings are somewhere around fourteen stories.
It's a crazy.
It's actually not. Clear right there, too.
Yeah.
They were designed to look like.
Fight battles over.
Yes, which, yes, which definitely like models that like old shipyard.